I've been documenting the last decade on YouTube between vlogs and tutorials and just you can kind of see what season I am in my life. Just following my YouTube channel through the years, you know, one of the things that I think set me apart and that I I truly enjoy that. Maybe a lot of people don't enjoy. I started a mentorship and I think that this crowd does enjoy it. And right now at the peak, we had like fifteen hundred members. Now we have like eight hundred, right? Which I'm still super blessed, super grateful for. You know, these guys are hungry to learn and and what I realized is I was trying so hard to put the puzzles in for everyone. Here's the blueprint. Just follow it. You can do it. And I think that that still works and it's worked for a lot of people. If anybody has been in the mentorship, you've seen all of the W's, all of the people's testimonials in real time, probably. My thing is though, there's also a group that needs to see what it takes, what it's like. You know, we were doing motivational Mondays to try to help people with the mindset and that's a game changer for a lot of people. There's a lot of people who say that that's their favorite calls. But I also think seeing that, seeing what it takes, you know, like, so what I I started doing is live streaming. Just me learning, just me getting better. What is growth to me now? Today, we spent the day where I was showcasing what I watched, me learning things. So we were watching Tom Lee and learning about about him. And so I wanted to show you guys that, but as I'm doing that, I'm multitasking. I'm working a lot, but I love this shit. I enjoy it. I work a lot, but I enjoy what I do. I love it. I think anybody can get to this place. You also have to have a season where you do things. You don't have to, but some of you unfortunately have to to get, see your way out. The only way I saw my way out at that time of my life was I needed to work my ass off just for a season. And it might be doing shit I don't want to do, but I always got to be learning. I always got to be growing. If you're going to learn something new, B, know that you're going to have to have the time to be obsessed about it because you're going to get the best at it that you can be. And what that takes is a whole lot of learning so that you can have the confidence and the conviction to take the action that you need to to actually show the results you're looking for. The quality isn't the best, but if you guys watch it, you know, it's long. If you guys watch it, I guess it'd be almost like a podcast if you want to take it that way. So I still kept this, the video, even though it's terrible quality because it was a zoom with my mentorship with my students. But if you guys want to see more of these, I will continue to make them and they'll be much better quality. I'll make sure of it. I enjoy it, guys. I was looking at the screener today because I'm planning on putting a bunch of money into my brokerage account. And so I really want to get a grasp of what's going on in the market, you know, the fundamentals. But you know, I also want to just kind of sharpen, you know, sharpen things a bit. What I was showing you guys is that, you know, I was looking for opportunities. If let's say I'm going to put a bunch of money in here that I can't really afford to lose. I'm going to play it safe. So I'm going to do something that's like, I want like a three percent max return. This is monthly, right? And then I'm going to do something that's less risky. So a point two gives you an eighty percent chance of winning this trade. So I'm going to be in that range. And then when you scroll down, you'll be able to see. You can see like these are giving two point eight percent monthly, but they're risky, right? And I don't want to take that type of risk, even though I have a eighty one percent chance of winning this trade. The fact that there's a five percent margin of safety, I'd rather choose something that's a little bit easier. So I'm scrolling down and I'm looking for something that says safe. I'm not seeing anything right now, so we might need to mess around with the sliders a bit. Let me make the delta range a little bit higher. We'll do twenty one. Let's see if something pops up. So like right now, I'm probably not going to get into any trade. Earlier, not too long ago, when you guys, you guys weren't, I wasn't streaming the video apparently. I definitely found a couple. Okay, so they're, they show up. You just got to be patient. So that's all I was saying. And and now what I want to do is I'm, I'm watching this series. Okay. It's twenty twenty five. You never have access to this much information, bro. Like this, you weren't going to get information like we're about to watch now unless you were in the same room with these guys. And chances are you would never be, right? But now these guys are doing podcasts.
How did you get to where you are today? Where did you start your career? Give us some of the insights of of where you came from to today? And how you've kind of formed your thinking on route because we all change how we look at the world as we go on. So I'd love to hear some of that.
I've been interested in stocks my entire life. So as a youngster, I was one of those kids that did like to read the newspaper and check the price tables in the Detroit Free Press.
The Detroit Free Press. That's not the normal place to start.
Yeah. And so after high school, I went to the University of Pennsylvania Wharton and studied finance because I was quite interested in business and ended up in New York. My first job on Wall Street was at Kidder Peabody, which is an old boutique investment bank. At the time, it was owned by GE. I was assigned to focus on the wireless industry, which in nineteen, in the early nineties was in its infancy. I was a, you know, a very junior analyst, a junior with a call, research associate. And the industry only had thirty four million cell phones globally at the time.
Wow.
And of course, as you know, it's grown parabolically to almost, actually I did the last check. There's actually more cell phones today than humans.
Yeah.
So the penetration's over one hundred percent. That was a really helpful industry to to do stocks. Because one, it was an industry that consumed a lot of capital. They were borrowing money. The carriers I covered had to borrow money to build networks. And then until they had enough users on the network, they actually didn't make money and it was a hyper competitive business. So I learned a lot about just some of the rules about investing such as, you know, growth isn't the same as profits because these companies didn't necessarily make money and yet they, the stocks actually had value. So it wasn't as if you had to stick with the rules of like earnings is the reason the stock has value. Because the carriers themselves had spectrum, which was a hidden asset. And then they had the recurring value of their customers. Subscriber value really was a newer concept in the nineties because besides the cable industry, there really wasn't much in the way of subscription businesses. So idea of like lifetime revenue per sub, none of these were actually concepts yet. But they, those were the hidden assets. And one of the things I learned during during wireless was really two things that I think were very formative. The small, the simpler realization was that you could really understand what the stocks would do if you followed what the bonds were going to do. So I was at Kidder first, but then I moved to Solomon Smith Barney and they had a very big high yield trading task. And that's really where I learned so much about the levels of bonds. And so I knew wireless stocks were in trouble when their bonds were trading below eighty. And if their bank debt was below eighty, basically, you're going to go bankrupt. But actually, a lot of times the bonds would begin to recover and the stocks wouldn't move because, as you know, equity markets often have their own view about a company's prospects that are separate from the bonds. And so when the bonds recovered and the stocks hadn't, that was always a really big tactical opportunity for us. And so I had made some very famous bottom calls for the wireless stocks because I had seen pronounced recoveries in the bond prices that weren't reflected in the stock prices. But I think the second maybe more important thing I learned was the bias of age that I was in my twenties covering wireless. And actually, I became a senior analyst.
I'm assuming eighty dollars Wednesday Bible study. And the reason why I'm assuming that's what he's saying is because when the, when the price of bonds go down generally, you know, that means, that means that the, the company, so what a bond is, it's like a loan to a company. You can, a company can issue bonds to try to get loans from the public, but so can the federal government. And a lot of other countries buy US Treasury bonds because they believe our economy is the safest. When those bonds go down in price, the value of them go down. People start, people start panicking, they start selling them off. It goes down even more than, you know, the debt starts getting more expensive and it could crush a company, but it can also crush a country, right? And so that's what he's talking about.
At age twenty four. So by age twenty four, I was actually covering my own stocks. And I had a lot of optimism about wireless because I saw how much my friends were using it to communicate. In the nineties, we all had to use payphones and answer machines, but when you had a cell phone, you could suddenly call each other. And so it seemed very revolutionary to me. Whereas a lot of our clients who were in their forties and fifties thought of wireless as a yuppie toy. And so they viewed wireless as simply something that the landline companies, business wireline or long distance would use to protect their existing businesses. So they didn't see wireless as actually a replacement or supplanting landline. They saw it as a way to protect landline. And that also gave us a lot of opportunity because, you know, of course, the world flipped. It must have been two thousand or so, the number of cell phones exceeded the number of landlines. So it took, you know, eight years, but then the crossover happened. And so that was, that made me realize the world of new opportunity and technology cannot be viewed through the eyes of old people. Because older Americans are, tend to favor incumbency. And, you know, of course, that's actually very true to crypto because I saw a lot of the echoes of crypto.
That's crazy.
The two thousand.
So it kind of tells you, you know, you, the younger you are, the more of a competitive you had advantage you have because you're not, you're, you're not so afraid of change. You can, you have an open mind and you're seeing the actual change that is actually, that is actually formidable, right? Now, there's a caveat because sometimes when you're young, you're stupid as hell. For example, I never bought, ever bought, and I got close to it because it took me a while. But I'm not over here, I wasn't over here buying those, the monkeys or whatever, the, the, the crypto stuff, the, what the hell are those things called? I'm having a blank. Not ETF, no. ETFs are good. NFTs, yeah. Yeah, the NFT thing was just wild. And the fact that people were spending the amount of money they were spending for those. And then the meme coin thing, like, some people were like putting their life savings into meme coins. It's just, it's just, it's insane. It's gotta make sense at the same time. So for me, AI makes sense. There's a lot of people who are calling it a bubble. I've never, I haven't believed in something so long since Bitcoin and since Tesla. But this thing I believe in. I didn't, I didn't believe in, I, I, you know, though, I still don't believe in a lot of the crypto. But I believe in the technologies of it. You just got to figure out how to, how to, how to, how to buy the shovel pretty much. Anyways, yeah, so he's got a great point. And I, so I think you got to have a balance of the two, you know?
Seventeen period. That looked a lot like
Whoops.
Wireless, you know, the, the idea of adoption.
Was it the realization that you had that these things had network effects, that these were kind of Metcalfe's Law based networks? And why was that different to the landline business, which didn't seem to have, or was it still valued in the same way on network effects? Or was it more just straightforward cash flows?
Well, the landline business was very mature in the nineties. So penetration was already a hundred percent. And so I think that landline in the, in the burgeoning era, so that would have been like the
Santi, what do you mean by that?
When they were originally laying the cables was very much a network effects business. Because that landline business was hyper competitive. Because what people were doing in the nineteen hundreds was they were laying copper fiber to homes and
This man said in the nineteen hundreds.
Cities to actually put lines.
When did we start saying in the nineteen hundreds? That shit made me feel old. I was born in the nineteen hundreds.
Cities, you know, on these poles. But believe it or not, they weren't monopoly locations. So there were tons and tons of what they call regional bell, regional operating companies. And so, you know, many, like even by the nineties, there were still maybe twelve regional telephone companies on top of the, the bells that were spun out of eighteen teeth, which became a monopoly provider over the, in that early nineteen hundreds period. So telephony itself was actually the Wild West in the beginning. And there was this pricing regime called intralata calling. So phone calls, so you, you, if you weren't growing up in the States, you won't know this, but like even in the nineties and eighties, if you were calling your friend who lived one lata over, he might only be like literally a five minute drive, but he was in what they call a lata area. It was charged as a long distance call.
Wow.
So local phone calls were literally based on a lata. They call intralata calling and interlata was whenever you crossed the lata, which could just be like ten miles away or could be thirty miles away. You don't have any idea. And of course cellular compressed all that because cellular suddenly said like, why should we even charge the difference between local and long distance?
So we're now in the early two thousands. You've seen the explosion of mobiles. You've now seen mobile flip over. What's next for you?
That was a very successful period for us covering the wireless industry because it really blossomed from the nineties all the way to the mid two thousands. But by two thousand seven.
Before, sorry, before we do that, we
It's interesting how Tom, he seemed to have been investing in probably the most innovative time in, 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 in humanity. If you think about it, dude, that, that time from the late nineties to now, it's insane, the growth that we've had technologically, right? We quickly went from, you know, beepers to landlines to flip phones to, you know, the, the BlackBerrys and then smartphones. And now we have computers, like computers in our hands with the best damn cameras with the, you know, like it's, it's crazy.
Got the overbuild.
Our wallets, everything is, is, is the phone.
That happened in the fiber business in the, in ninety nine, two thousand. Let's talk a bit about that because that was obviously a fascinating period that we may or may not be repeating some of the AI stuff right now as well.
Yeah, that was a magical time. You're right. And in fact, it wasn't really, looking back, it, it started in ninety six. And it really, it lasted all the way through two thousand. So there were forty eight months or four years where anything related to the growth of internet and mobile. And on top of that, of course, there was the emerging market story because they were building communications networks globally meant everything was going to the moon. I remember that period, but it was really
Everything was going to the
Period where if you found a stock and it could be a random name, but it was doing something interesting, it could go up five times or ten times in a few months.
Sound like crypto.
And I remembered at, when I, at the time I was at Smith Barney, our salespeople were getting so accustomed to like stocks having three hundred percent upside that if you had a buy recommendation on a stock that only had twenty percent upside, they'd be like, come on, Tom, what kind of stock is this? I can make twenty percent in a week. And I remembered Smith Barney, we'd have this equity capital markets meeting and trading meeting weekly and we would really talk about market behavior. And Smith Barney was unique because they had a very big retail operation on top of institutional. But every time there was a market drawdown, we would hear from the ECM desk and the trading desks, how much retail came in and bought that dip. So it was a market where investors were buying the market steadily. And it of course did ascend eventually parabolically. And people were using margin debt very aggressively. I remembered many stories from Smith Barney about people who, instead of getting mortgages, were just taking margin loans to buy a house. And of course, the stock that they own would go up, so then the house
Listen to what he's saying. And this is what I be telling y'all about. Listen to this, listen to this. Okay, I'm gonna break this down for y'all. He just said, people were putting all of their money into the stock market and buying houses with margin loans. Okay. And so what that means is, and I, I don't know if you guys remember this, but during the pandemic, if you had a hundred grand in your Robin Hood account, you could literally take a loan, a one to one loan. You could go, go take a loan for a hundred grand, keep your money in the stock market so it's collecting interest, right? And your interest rate on that margin was one and a half percent. Which means it was cheaper to buy a car with a margin loan or buy a house with a margin loan than it was to go get a mortgage. And on top of that, you were probably making twenty, twenty five percent from the S and P five hundred. So that alone was paying your damn loan off because the loan was only a point and a half. That happens in different cycles. And this is why I tell you guys, it's very important to invest, to have, to put money into assets. True investors just adjust with the times, but history repeats itself. There's going to be a time where real estate is the best investment and there's going to be a time where it's stocks and it's going to be crypto again, maybe. I don't, I, I don't know. But there's always going to be things and if you're smart with your money, if you always remain bankable, you're always going to have the best opportunities that's out there. I remember when that shit was happening with the one and a half percent interest rate. So apparently that was a thing back then too, because stocks were booming. Everybody was so used to it. And, and dude, it just made sense. Where right now, margin, a margin loan will cost you twelve percent right now. Maybe you might be able to get it as low as like, no, I think twelve percent is probably a great rate right now as far as a margin loan. But they go up and down. And so if you're able to just focus on your brokerage account and build wealth within it, whether it's crypto you're buying inside that brokerage account or it's stocks or it's an index fund, maybe you don't want to buy anything and you just want to keep it in the brokerage and, and earn your four percent or five percent a month, right? But having that relationship with a, a bank or a brokerage like that is, is very, very, it could be very profitable for you. And think about it, once you take the, when you take a margin loan, there's no application, there's no credit check. It's literally a click of a button. So, so like, imagine the people who had crazy brokerage accounts in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when houses came crashing down, they were going to auctions, buying houses for pennies on a dollar with their margin, with their margin, with their, with their brokerage accounts. Crazy. All right, let's keep going.
Tree. So it was, that did create a really reinforced
Hopefully that answers your question, Mootan.
I think resulted in a bubble. And as much as people kind of hearken back and say they've seen it again, in the equity world, it, it has not been as pervasive, you know, and it's been much shorter. And many people have been too quick to call the top. You know, one of the things that happened in that late nineties period and I, and you know this, is that it destroyed value investors. Like that was Foster Fries and some other big macro hedge funds.
Tiger, Julian
Yeah. Yeah. So I don't want to mention Tiger, but yes, like they famously really got steamrolled because that style of investing value was really getting crushed by momentum and the, the reallocation. It was really boomer capital into the stock market. And then of course it ran out of steam. I, I think that that will happen again, but to me, people who are saying today is a bubble are calling the top so quickly because it was really four years, you know, and that's a long time.
So Mootan, just to kind of go delve a little bit deeper into it, I, I think that right now, it's stocks, it's AI. It's what is, what is, what is changing the world right now? And to me, it's anything that has to do with the AI industry. And so that's why I went and I wanted to understand it. I wanted to learn it. I didn't want it to be like, like for, for me, I kind of missed. I understood that cryptocurrency was going to be insane. And the, some of you guys might have heard this story before. I went up to Danny, we sat down because every year we sit down and we say, what are we going to focus on this year? And that year, I remember we were, we were looking at opening more barber shops. And I said, you know what, one of these shops, why don't we put it into Bitcoin or Tesla? This is two thousand and thirteen. This is two thousand and thirteen. And it was a lot of money. It wasn't a little bit of money, right? It was like, what, at that time, you know, you could open a shop all day with thirty thousand dollars. I know that sounds crazy. But during that time with thirty K, I could open a shop. We were going to take thirty K instead of opening a location, we were going to take thirty K, put it into Bitcoin and Tesla. That would have been worth millions, multi, 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 multi millions. And we didn't do it. Part of it was because I didn't have the conviction over the barber shop. The barber shop was like a for sure thing, you know, we knew what we were doing and, you know, it was the for sure thing. So I, I don't regret the decision because, you know, now we're at thirteen locations and, or twelve locations going on our thirteenth. And these shops make a million dollars a year. So I'm not mad at my decision. And that's for the rest of my life. I don't see AI messing that up. I don't see robots messing that up anytime soon. If robots disrupt the barbering industry, everything else is already disrupted. You guys get what I'm saying? And so I still don't regret that decision, but had I did my research and really had the conviction, I might have made a different decision. And so I didn't want this to happen with AI. So I, I don't know if you guys, how many of you guys checked it out when I was live streaming every day? I was studying. I was learning what are, what are, what are silicone wafers? What is silicone? Where's the best silicone mined? Do you guys know the best silicone is mined in Kansas? In the world, the best silicone is in Kansas. Our government is too regulatory though. And that's one of the things that I do like about Trump's administration is that he, he's not so regulatory about that, right? But I didn't even realize that these, that these chips that are, that are, are the reason why AI exists today, they're making rocks think and remember things. That's what it is. It's some sorcery shit. So silicone is, is, they're rocks, they're pebbles, they're sand. And they're, they take that silicone and that silicone, they turn into a very thin wafer. And they use these machines from a factory from a company called ASML. That's on my watch list. Okay? It's the only, it's the only factory in the world that makes the machines to create these, that has the pressure to create these silicone wafer chips that are necessary to create the chips that Nvidia makes. It's the only company in the world that can do it. Isn't that crazy? How that this company in Taiwan has such a monopoly? And it's for several reasons. It's not just because of IP. It's because it's very expensive and very difficult to do what they're doing. We, we're trying to do it here in the States. ASML has created factories in Phoenix, for example, but it's not easy to do. So, so for now, Taiwan's the only place that can do it. That's why like China and America kind of are fighting for it. That's the reality of it. A lot of people don't know this, right? And so these are things that I want to know because it makes me understand when you look at the news and they're, they're scaring you about all these different ideas, it doesn't get you off of your focus. And so, so anyways, ASML is the only place that can make these, these silicone wafers. Nvidia uses ASML, AMD, every single manufacturer, including Apple, uses ASML to create their silicone wafers. And then they create their chips and then, you know, some of it gets assembled in the States or in China or wherever they're at. And Nvidia has the IP. They have the, they have the IP, they have, they have the, what's the word, monopoly on that. But they deserve it because they invented it. And so everybody else is trying to catch up with Nvidia, but they're so behind that it's very, very difficult. And so then you, you wonder, okay, so, so why are these chips so important? Because these chips have the type of layers of, dude, if you see the way that these chips are made, it's like some, it's like some shit in The Matrix. It's literally The Matrix. Let me show you guys. I know we're, we're kind of veering off topic. We'll, we'll finish this, but I just want you guys, we just want you guys, I just want you guys to really see this. Hold on, let me see, what's the wording that I should use here? A chip under, yeah, a chip under, a chip under a microscope. Let's do that. It's gonna, this, this might blow your mind, guys. And these are things that I think are so important to know and to learn, teach your kids, you know what I mean? Like, look, this is, this is an iPhone chip. This is an iPhone chip. Check it out. And the reason why I say this is an iPhone chip is because an Nvidia chip is way bigger. It's, it's way crazier. So the, the, the powerful thing about these Nvidia chips is how much, how much, you'll see what I'm talking about, but how many layers of this can you compact into a little tiny chip like this? There are billions of, of transistors. They're called transistors, right? There's, and transistors are how you communicate with the rocks, with the silicone. It's literally how you communicate with it. The transistors do it. It's so crazy, but you're going to see, it's like a whole world of transistors. So check this out. And, and, and when you look at this one, remember this is iPhone one. Maybe we can find an Nvidia one, but check it out. There's no sound. This is a microscope. Damn, this is legit. This ain't even computerized. So look, this is a chip under a micro, microscope. Watch this shit. This is a little tiny chip on that small chip with chips on it, with chips on that. Look at this shit, bro. Guys, we're like four layers in. Now here's all the transistors. These are all the transistors. So imagine an Nvidia chip, look, there's another layer and then you can go in and there's probably going to be more layers. Look at this, dude. How is this even possible? Look, even more layers. That's under a microscope. Now imagine a hundred times that, a million times that. That's what an Nvidia chip has and that's how it communicates with rocks. And so now how is AI made? These are the only, Nvidia chips are the only ones that have enough power to hold the amount of information that it, that is available to the world. And so what AI is, is it's large language models. And what these models do is they literally just crawl and scour the internet, all of the information in the world, all of it, right? And it, it's, what it does is today in a regular hard drive, you might be able to put a terabyte or two terabytes in a hard drive. But imagine in a little tiny little fucking piece of dust, you can put a million terabytes of information in it and compact it into a really small file that's easy to transfer on the internet, right? That's what they created with these long, long language models. And so what they do is they keep, what they, they keep refining the information and refining the information. And then they use these, they use humans, millions of humans, bro, in India and shit to make sure that the information that's coming in is accurate so that there isn't bad information coming in. And they do that a million times over and over and over to the point where they don't need humans anymore. And now the AI is self-teaching itself. And now the AI is getting so damn smart. You still need the people to make sure that everything's quality control, right? But you don't need as many people. And that's what's creating these new versions, these smarter versions, the versions that are creating movies now. Like the versions that are creating better music than Michael Jackson and shit, you know, like that's what's happening. Michael Jackson and shit, you know, like that's what's happening. So AI, with the more money that's poured in, this is what people don't realize. The first large, large language model was created by Google. And it cost them about two hundred and fifty million dollars to create the first large language model. And that model sucked. You guys remember the little chatbots that, you know, hi, how are you? Good. How are you? I'm great. What, like, and it didn't really do shit? Like, it never worked? That was the first large language model, right? It just felt like if this, then that. But then it got, and so imagine taking that risk to build something that's so stupid. You don't even know if in the long term it's going to work. And by the way, after you spent that two hundred and fifty million, you gotta spend another hundred billion to get it to the next level. And so that's what was happening and, and they need hundreds of thousands of these H one hundred chips from Nvidia to create this and to power it. And each of those H one hundred chips are thirty thousand dollars. So the only people in the world that could actually create this were billionaires. It's not our, our government couldn't do it. You and a scientist couldn't do it. It, it had to be billionaires with endless pockets that were willing to take the risk and fund this. You see what I'm saying? And now we're on like the, what is it? GPT five now? We're on our fifth version of it. And look how much better it's gotten. So imagine version ten, because it compounds, it compounds and, 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 and so the next one, ChatGPT six might be three times as good as GPT four or something like that, right? And sometimes there's just like little refinements, right? In each of the versions, but sometimes it gets insane. And so when you look at the difference between ChatGPT five and the first one, or the new Sora that just came out, that's making all these crazy videos, and the first one, it's insane. So imagine what number ten is going to look like. Now, the biggest difference is we're going to get to ten in probably three years, where getting to five took nine years. And then getting to fifteen might take three years, right? It's going to be faster to get to these points because these models are getting smarter and they're teaching themselves at a faster rate and our technology is getting better. But by the way, we need energy to power this all. And so if you believe that this is going to be the brain to robots, to all this stuff, and that is the future, then you're looking at the energy companies. You're looking at the silicone mining companies. You're looking at Nvidia. And you're making sure that Nvidia is not losing its IP advantage. Because there might be AMD that has a breakthrough technology that was even smarter, doesn't break any of their patents and skyrockets them, right? We've seen some, I, some, some possibilities of that, but nothing, nothing that really stood the test of time, right? Like, for example, when this Chinese LLM came out, I forget the name of it. Oh, DeepSeek came out. It took a trillion dollars out of the American stock market because everybody thought that DeepSeek was the game changer. And that lasted for a couple of months, right? And then GPT four came out and, and blew that out the water. So just, you know, you have to, me understanding at this level, and I can go, I can go deep in, like into this rabbit hole. But, but me looking at this, and when, and, and when that happened with DeepSeek or whatever, I knew what was going on. I knew what was going on. Immediately I bought more Nvidia, I bought more, everything that I could. And I probably, I made seventy-five hundred bucks in profit that month off of twenty K. You know, because I just saw the opportunity. So when you have this level of knowledge and you don't have to go and do the research yourself, that's why, that's why it's nice to be in groups like this because we can be learning together. You can leverage what I know. I might be able to leverage what Santi knows. I don't know, I don't know that much about crypto. I know about, I know the technology. I like Bitcoin a lot, but like there's, I know there's a rabbit hole there. I know there's, there's a deeper understanding to it, but I just, I, I can't do everything. We can't all do everything. But together, if this is the, if this is the type of shit that y'all are on, that y'all like, it's hard to find this. Yeah. So, all right, let's, let's continue. I thought that was, so anyways, you guys can kind of tell why I nerd out about this topic. So let's continue watching this video.
And making managing director or whatever, you know what I mean? Like, it's a long time that this bubble was really being created in the nineties.
And how did you then navigate? So post-bubble, we then get the rise of social media and Web two essentially and all of that. How did you, how was that lens for you? Were you still looking at that? Where were you? Were you still at Smith Barney or?
I was at JB Morgan at the time. So I joined JB Morgan in nineteen ninety-nine. And I was the head of telecom research. I was brought in. And that was very, the two, the post-two thousand period was really interesting for, and you're hitting on it because the bubble burst and it was a terrible, you know, two-year drawdown, maybe almost three years. But two really interesting things happened. One was value stocks actually ascended. So there was an ascent of a new class of stocks that really did well. But then in the middle of the center of where the bubble burst, okay? Where huge deflation took place because all of a sudden fiber prices deflated and service and provisioning prices collapsed, that a new class of tech stocks emerged as winners. You know, and it was, it was the, it was the Ebays and the Expedia's because all of a sudden their business models worked because fiber became cheap. And like, yeah, so you had high gross margin businesses and actually.
Okay, so let's.
The winners of.
Let's talk about this right here. So he said, the winners, so people who held Expedia and eBay at that time got rich, got rich. Think about how eBay was Amazon at one point, right? It blew up. And it's the people who had a deeper understanding because fiber got cheaper that understood you had to hold on. You knew it was coming. It was just a matter of time. And it's the same thing, for example, with AI. The cheaper, the, the more energy that's there, the better the technology gets, the cheaper the chips get. It's going to become a household thing to, to have robotics and it be cheap enough that everyone has it. And if you can get it and it folds your damn laundry, everybody's buying one. Everyone is. It's going to be like a cell phone, right? And I was listening to Elon Musk and his vision for Tesla. And, you know, Tesla, Tesla, the car, the car thing, that's going to be like their AirPods at one point. It's not going to be their main product. Their main product is going to be XAI and it's going to be robotics. That's what it's going to be. And it's always been. He's been telling us this for many, many years. When they built their own factories and they got factories that are creating one, you know, one, one structure to build a vehicle so that they can build them quickly and efficiently. He's building all of these things and he's learning more about robotics than anyone in the world because of it. He just used cars to get that information. And then people who are driving are, you know, he's literally recording billions and billions and billions and billions of miles of, of, of information to be on top of it. So he's been leveraging the auto industry to get to this level. And so all these people that were hating on, on Tesla saying that was overvalued, it was overvalued because there was enough people out there that understood the goal for Tesla long-term and they were buying into it five years from now. And so when you look at stocks like Nvidia, if it's expensive right now, that's not a bad thing. Because if in five years you think it's going to be a certain price, which I think Tesla in the next few years will be the first ten trillion dollar company ever. And I think it's gonna, I think it's going to be the type of company that can get to a hundred trillion fast as hell. And we've never seen anything like that. But if, 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 if an iPhone is in every Ameri, if there's more iPhones out there than there, than there are human beings, I think robots will be the next thing that does the same thing, except robots aren't going to be five hundred bucks, a thousand bucks. They're going to be like a car. You know what I'm saying? And everybody's going to feel like they need one. Because it's going to make your life so much more efficient and it's actually going to save you money. See what I'm saying? Like my, the robot might clean my pool, might do my laundry, clean my house, shit, wash my car. Who knows? What all it can do. And if you combine that all together, that monthly payment for that robot is going to be cheaper than the services you pay. You know what I'm saying? So it's just something to think about. If you like Tesla long-term, because of that, I'm selling puts on that all day, collecting premium all day, all day, collecting passive income all day. All right, let's continue.
The post-internet bubble collapse were internet companies, basically.
And that was because all of the capital costs have been written down to essentially zero for the
Yeah.
fiber optic network. So now it wasn't a high cost to run an internet business.
That's right. And I, I'm sure you remember in that period because I was still doing telecom. People said, there's so much dark fiber, we're never going to use it. They said, there's unlimited fiber capacity. So people were just giving it away. And of course, now, of course, we've used up all the fiber capacity. And, and actually in wireless, wireless had a huge collapse too. But it was a reset of the industry because those stocks ended up, you know, providing and producing huge returns for investors as well.
So that was after the three G overbuild, I guess. It was the kind of, well, it wasn't so much of an overbuild as an overcost because I think it was the UK that first auctioned the, the.
Yeah, the license.
It off. And then everybody followed suit in Europe and it basically bankrupted the whole industry.
Correct. That's right.
So I want to also use this as an example. Here's, here's, it's actually, this is happening right now. So a lot of people think there's an AI bubble happening because there's so much capital being poured into the AI industry. You know, it's, and it's not just, it's not just the stock market. It's, it's private equity as well. That's just pouring a shit ton of money. Nvidia is taking the money that they're making and they're reinvesting it into other AI companies. Nvidia has invested in XAI, in X, in, in OpenAI or ChatGPT, in, in OP or car. They invest into all of these companies themselves because they know what's happening. Okay. And people think it's a bubble, but here's the thing. It's because people don't believe AI is going to be as transformative as they think because, you know, we, we've been seeing some AI slop, some shit that's like, you know, the AI chats, the AI phone calls and stuff. That stuff don't, it don't work a hundred percent. So people think it's exaggerated and it's, it's, it's unwarranted. And so everything's overpriced and everything's going to come crashing down once everybody realizes it. But I think that the smartest people in the world, they're putting their money where their mouth is. They're not just marketing that they believe this is the future. They're taking the profits and instead of paying themselves big bonuses as CEOs, they're putting it back into the industry because it needs that capacity of capital in order to build the infrastructure necessary for this to reach its potential. No different than when he was talking about the telecom, the wireless and the fiber optics. People were overbuilding fiber optics and spending a bunch of money in fiber optics. And people were like, it's never going to be used. You know, this technology just isn't going to grow into what people think it is. And look what happened. So I think that's the same thing that's going to happen with AI. And as long as people keep doubting it, that's more money for, that's more money, more profits that you can make if you, if you've, if you pay attention to it. So let's keep going.
Yeah, wireless, you know, the, the US government got pretty wise to trying to monetize spectrum. There were really many, many famous stories in the nineties because I, I was covering the carriers where I was sent to like an Ohio town. Okay. So I'm working for Solomon Brothers. They're like, can you meet this dentist? And I would go to this region town in Ohio and he, this dentist in the nineties got a cellular license through lottery. He just applied for it and got it. And he put some towers and was collecting roaming revenues.
Wow.
But he was actually the richest man in the, almost in the entire state. Maybe at least in the town because he was making like something like two or three million dollars a month from like a handful of towers.
Wow.
And he was, he wanted to sell it. And these were actually quite valuable. And, you know, the carriers would buy him or, and of course he was fabulously wealthy with all the cash he just earned over those years. And so
I didn't even know you could do that.
The US realized they don't want to necessarily give these away in lottery and they began to auction them. And I'm going to get the number wrong, but I think that they've had like thirty-six auctions or something since. And, and I keep in touch with some of the people who bought some of the original spectrum. Wireless spectrum actually has been a very profitable strategy. So like, it's almost like if someone bought in these auctions and held, the annualized return on the subsequent secondary trades has actually been double digits. So, and then there's a very famous sale that was Straight Path, AT&amp;T ended up buying Straight Path. They actually owned a lot of millimeter spec, millimeter wave spectrum. And it was, I think it was the original Windstar, but Straight Path emerged, spun out of US LD and it was like a three dollar stock. I remember meeting with them and this is not, this is past the cellular era. This is probably two thousand eighteen and it was a three dollar stock, but they owned all this millimeter wave. And they talked about how this could be valuable for five G. AT&amp;T bought that same company for two hundred forty dollars a share. I think maybe like 12 months later. So, so Spectrum has only gone in value, gone up in value.
That's cool. So I like how they're starting off with like historic, the history. Kind of like, you know, the first tech boom that he witnessed in his life and what happened and what he learned from it and all that, right? But now this is part two and it looks like he's going into the future. He's going into Bitcoin, AI in the future. And let's, and so let's hear what he has to say there. What do I think about the Meta and their Meta Ray-Bans glasses? Alec Barbero from, from Calgary, he, he bought me the last, the last pair as a gift and I didn't love them. I used them maybe once, to be honest, but I've seen a lot of people with these new ones. I don't know if they're, if they're fire or not. I haven't even looked into them, but are they worth looking into, guys?
Yeah. So, okay. So now we're in the mid, we're sort of, we've got two thousand and eight to get through as well. So how did you navigate that?
Well, by then my role had morphed at JP Morgan. So in two thousand seven, in two thousand four, JP Morgan asked me to take on a second role there. So I was doing wireless carrier research. But then I also became their head of small and mid-cap strategy. And that, that was like a coat, a bit of a coaching job because they had a lot of young analysts. So I was teaching them stock picking. Just because I, like wireless really lent itself to stock picking because the industry grew exponentially, yet the stocks were very cyclical. So it was really a way to, you know, I always had to understand sentiment. But the, the second reason I think they gave me that job was during this, the tumult post-dot-com bubble, a lot of wireless carriers were going bankrupt. And I had to work with our DIP lending desk. The DIP lending desk is the desk JP Morgan uses whenever there's distress. And so they provide financing either in a distress moment or when they're bankrupt. And it, it actually is one of the most profitable businesses because that's really when they have an edge. And some of the carriers like Leap Wireless fell into DIP lending trading. And Jerry Madigan was the trader at the time. He was buying wireless, the Leap Wireless bonds. And he was buying them at, you know, sixteen cents. And he started to ask me all these questions about wireless. And we went through and he realized that this, the spectrum itself may be money good. So he was able to turn that into a Leap prepackaged reorganization. Leap, he was paid one twenty-seven on his sixteen. So he made the firm several hundred million dollars on a trade that should have just, he was just thinking was.
So this is, let's go back to the bonds, right? What he's saying is, I don't know if he meant sixteen cents or a dollar twenty. I think he said a dollar twenty-seven. So Leap, the wireless carrier was selling because everybody thought, you know, the wireless company, wireless companies weren't going to grow, that it was a bubble, all these things, right? So the bonds were cheap. They were sixteen cents. And so you could buy a bond for sixteen cents and it would pay you a certain amount of interest. Okay? The value of the bonds go up and down, okay? Because people started to realize, oh shit, wireless is, is here to stay. The bond went up in value from sixteen cents to a dollar and twenty-seven cents. So not, not, so now you're earning that same interest on, on the value of something that's a dollar twenty-seven versus sixteen cents. But I mean, you're going to sell those bonds at a dollar twenty-seven. So he made the company hundreds of millions of dollars. But if he believed in it long-term, he could have kept the bonds and just earned interest on it. Pretty powerful stuff. That's cool. I wonder, we haven't seen that yet with AI. We haven't seen, if the bubble bursts with AI, I'm going to lose some money, but I'm also going to invest even more money into the industry because I know the future of it. Right? Unless something fundamentally changes, right? Maybe there's a new technology that we, we, we didn't even fathom could exist, takes over, you know what I'm saying? Yeah.
Originally a scalp. And he became a managing director very young, but I, it inspired me because at that, around that same time, Eddie Lampert was doing stuff with Sears and Kmart. And so I realized that there was a lot to this idea that things that were in bankruptcy might actually have value if you could sort of find the right opportunity. So I asked JP Morgan if I could write a, a larger piece. And I, they had just opened this office in Mumbai called, which is a research office of really talented Indians out of Mumbai, but they weren't being utilized. And so I had them comb through, I think like four thousand bankruptcy filings since the seventies. And we put together all this analysis and then we wrote a report called the chapter after chapter eleven, which looked at.
Wait, I gotta, I gotta listen to that again.
Money was made on stocks that emerged from bankruptcy.
I gotta listen to this again. Because this literally sounds like AI. Millions of, of Indians doing quality control for the data that's coming in through these large language models. This guy was doing this for bankruptcy reports.
And so I realized that there was a lot to this idea that things that were in bankruptcy might actually have value if you could sort of find the right opportunity. So I asked JP Morgan if I could write a, a larger piece. And I, they had just opened this office in Mumbai, which is a research office of really talented Indians out of Mumbai, but they weren't being utilized. And so I had them comb through, I think like four thousand bankruptcy filings since the seventies. And so I had them comb through, I think, like four thousand bankruptcy filings since the seventies. And we put together all this analysis and then we wrote a report called the chapter after chapter eleven, which looked at whether or not money was made on stocks that emerged from bankruptcy. And it turns out like under the right conditions, I don't remember the report, like we we like listed six things that if they happen, then then there's a higher probability that you can actually buy the stock as it emerges, or you could even buy the stock that never got canceled. Like American Airlines was one subsequent example, like where the equity wasn't canceled. And that became a very popular report because it was a way for people to speculate on something that people weren't previously speculating on. So it almost created a
New class.
Yeah, new class. And so that is why they asked me to do small midcap research because this was, you know, there were metals you was
And there was a lot of hedge funds starting in that space as well.
Yes, that's right. And there were like a lot of interesting, like Imperial Sugar, I remembered and anyways, so I did that for a while and and then in oh seven, in in late oh seven, they asked me if I wanted to take over the role of head of strategy because Abhijit Chakabarti, who was the JP Morgan strategist at the time, had moved to Morgan Stanley. And so that's when they asked me to take on the the broader macro role. And at the time, I was actually very skeptical because I was I was a stock analyst my entire career. So I'm used to going through ten Ks, calling companies, you know, doing road shows and really thinking of the world as a bottoms up of companies. And then they asked me to do something that's very macro and I always thought strategists really never knew what they were talking about. So.
And us macro guys never thought you guys did.
Yeah, that's right. And so I said I would do it and it took me a while to figure it out because, you know, going from stocks to looking at the market, it's a very different skill set because there's no edge. You know, at least I felt I had edge when I covered companies because I could, you know, have my own sources, do my own channel checks. You can't really do that with equities, but I did that and I would say it wasn't a great experience because that's really like when the bear market started and but but we found our footing because in two thousand eight, we wrote this report, which was called Guide to Stock Bottoms Part One. And and we still get requests for it these days because it was what we did was we looked at every major bear market since nineteen, I don't remember nineteen eighteen or something. And we had detailed two things. One was that almost every major bear market is a retracement of the prior bull market. So it's not about time, it's about how much you you unwind of the prior gains. And if we took nineteen twenty nine, the Great Depression or the seventy four bear market, those were one hundred twenty five percent retracements of the prior bull. So you have to go unwind the entire gain and then go down even more. But just using those two prior bear markets, we said the bottom would be six seventy to seven twenty on the S and P.
It was what six 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 or something?
Yeah, six sixty six. Yeah. And and then there's a time like that the the bear is a ratio of the prior bull. So so this the bottom would be the latest we said would be July oh nine. So that was our first sort of conclusion. Second conclusion was we listed, and this was kind of just more simple. We took like seven metrics that you saw before bottom and the order. And it was like things like the ISM and and employment, but we basically point out that like employment doesn't recover till after the bear market bottoms. So things that happened before bottom have nothing to do with fundamentals. And so we published that report in oh eight, but then on like February twentieth, the S and P fell below whatever the minimum threshold, like it it fell to seven ten or something in February or not. So we turned bullish, which was of course too early because then it went down all the way to six sixty six, but it was close enough to the bottom that that actually really gave us a lot of visibility at JP Morgan because we were, you know, really one of the first people to actually believe the market had already bottomed in oh nine. Even as you remember during the GFC, people thought that there was so much ghost inventory that housing wouldn't recover for decades and we were in a new normal because rates were so low. But actually, we were just arguing that this would look like a typical bull market recovery and and in retrospect, it was.
Yeah, that caught me wildly offside. I mean, I got two thousand and eight really right, two thousand and seven really right. Two thousand and nine, I just kind of emotionally overrode my business cycle models by thinking there was a further overhang of debt deflation that was going to and, you know, even though the ISM was picking up, all of the forward looking indicators were picking up. A lot of people got caught offside because they got so emotionally charged by what just happened.
Correct.
Whether you made money or lost money, kind of caught people out two thousand and nine.
Yeah. I mean, something that I kind of remember that from that period and I don't know if you can relate, but I was an equity person my entire career. But in two thousand eight, JP Morgan essentially got taken over by the bond side of the business. So, you know, like our and they were, these guys were amazing. I wished I understood what they were saying in oh seven because Eric Feinstein and Pete AccuVedi and Chris Flanagan were all panicked and freaking out in oh seven. So you, you know, you obviously caught right. Like I didn't really know how to interpret what they were saying. But of course, a huge disaster unfolded. But what was interesting is that in oh nine, the firm was really controlled by the bond side of the business, which had a very structurally negative view about the prospects for a recovery, which of course was good for the the bond side of the business anyways. And so I I think that the stock market got taken over by the bond market, basically, or macro. And and that made people structurally bearish for much of that recovery because the equity investor got wiped out.
That very episode, and then because most of us have been around for two thousand and one, then missed all of the tech boom that then happened.
Yeah.
Because they kind of couldn't believe it could happen and it did. And then Amazon was trading at a P of eight hundred and everyone's like, what the fuck is this? And everybody missed it because everyone's so macro focused and just didn't see it.
Yeah.
So PE is price to earnings, right? And generally, people will use PE to see if something's overvalued or undervalued. Um, and depending on the sector that it's in or the industry that it's in, you know, a PE at twenty might be normal, but then if you're like in banks, for example, in the bank sector, the banking industry, then, you know, you might want a PE that's lower, that's ten, eleven, twelve, that might be normal, even lower than that. Because there just isn't a lot of room for growth, right? Where like with tech, it's normal to see forty, fifty. I mean, he said Amazon two hundred. Amazon was considered, you know, tech because of of all the crazy stuff, even though it was retail, it was tech as well. So Amazon had an eight hundred PE ratio at one point. And if you didn't keep buying Amazon, you were stupid. And so this is why you can't always go by PE ratios, even though a lot of investors want to tell you that and they'll tell you you're stupid for buying Tesla, for example, because it's too expensive. It's over overpriced. It's mostly older people that don't understand that are so stuck with value investing that don't understand that say these things. So you can't always go by PE ratios, even though most people want you to.
Yeah, yeah.
Like a financial advisor, a lot of times they use traditional knowledge by the book. They're not wrong about following PE ratios, but we're trying to we're trying to be savvy investors. We're okay with learning and doing this ourselves.
That's right. So, you know, it probably helped that I had a technology background.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah. And I understood the importance of sentiment and how people when in the equity world, when someone gets tired of an idea, even if they're the smartest person, they'll hit reach a point that just says, get me out at any price. They don't even care. And they'll never revisit the idea. And but that's when opportunities create it, you know? So and then I, you know, around two thousand fourteen, I was, you know, things were going very well at JP Morgan. And we were in a a good bull market. But I was starting to realize that if if I stayed at JP Morgan, which is a great place, that was going to be my last job ever because I was approaching, you know, fifteen years there. And as much as I kind of, I think a lot of people would love the idea. I had always followed entrepreneurs and tech people. So I thought it, I need to think about starting my own company, which is when I left in two thousand fourteen to start FundStrat. And but it was based on a small bet, which was that I thought that the non-institutional business would come back. You know, the recovery of equities from two thousand nine to two thousand fourteen was largely institutional trading. There was actually almost a dwindling or an attrition of the retail investor. And, you know, in fact, you know, things like Schwab, I mean, they were trading very poorly. And so I I thought that the environment would return that was very akin to the nineties. So that's the bet we made when I started FundStrat, which was really to produce institutional quality research, but try to make it available to a wider audience.
And that's really started playing out by COVID. I mean, it we saw a bit of retail participation, but it wasn't really. But then COVID, it was like the entire millennial cohort became financialized overnight.
Yep.
And we'd all kind of given up that the millennials were ever going to be financialized. We thought they're never going to trade stocks. They hate the whole thing. They grew up with Occupy Wall Street. They've had enough.
It's so true. When Robin Hoods and when the pandemic happened, everybody was investing all of a sudden because they had their phones, they had Robin Hood, they had nothing else to do. And people and and I remember everybody was, there were people making more money sitting at home during the pandemic because of those stimulus packages than they were making at their job before the pandemic. So people were doing crazy well, investing, interesting times, man.
And then overnight
The fact we get to say we lived through that, right?
It never looked back. I mean, it just
Yeah.
Exploded.
That's right. And you know, that kind of makes sense because as we know, post Great Depression. So let's say you got into the forties.
I would say YouTube, YouTube had a big deal with that too. Shout out to the YouTubers because a lot of YouTubers were 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 telling people to invest and and showing them how to invest during that time as well.
Children born during the Great Depression that were becoming adults in their fifties. And they saw how their parents lost everything because of the stock market.
I saw that.
So from nineteen fifty to nineteen sixty, for instance.
Well, in two thousand eight, when the pan, when the recession happened, I watched my mom's retirement account because she didn't know. She didn't know anything and nobody told me nothing either. But my mom's 401K, because it was in stocks and the stock market came crashing down, her retirement went down like, it was insane. It was insane. Whatever companies that she was involved in went down like seventy, eighty percent. And then my mom panicked and sold it all and cashed it out because she didn't want to lose all of it because she didn't know better. And from that time on, I wanted nothing to do with the stock market because I didn't know.
Net household allocation to equities was negative. People weren't putting new money into stocks. They were taking it out and putting it into bonds. And bonds were actually having rolling negative performance because yields went from roughly, I don't remember, like three percent starting level to almost seven percent by the end of the sixties. So they were losing money in their bond portfolio.
And there was yield curve control. So these were, this was financial repression. So they're actually losing money in real terms as well.
That's right. And so of course, guys like Warren Buffett did famously well, but it shows you like there's a generational scar. And I think that post dot com Gen X was generationally scarred, which is why hedge funds did very well in the two thousands, but retail investors didn't buy stocks. And then, like you're saying, two thousand twenty is when the first millennials were in their thirties. Nineteen eighty, yeah, so they'd be like in their thirties by that point. And they that they're the ones that suddenly discovered equities.
And they discovered crypto as well, which was
Yes.
At the same time. So give me your crypto story as well. Where did that come in?
You know, Bitcoin actually had come up
Okay, here we go.
Discussions when I was at JP Morgan and John Norman, who was the head of FX at the time, had had talked about it. He wrote several pieces about, he wrote one that we had a whole conversation around, our firm did, which is that he thought that Bitcoin could become a currency at some point. Now, I think the network value of Bitcoin was like twenty billion. Okay?
Wow.
Which made it like a decent sized stock. But he was saying that it was obviously mostly for dark web and, you know, illicit purposes. So I didn't think much of it and I didn't didn't even follow Bitcoin. But then we started FundStrat. And then in two thousand seventeen, I remember just for some reason, I think I saw the price of Bitcoin again and I was like, whoa, this thing just went ten X in just a few years. And so I'm like, I've covered stocks enough to know that sometimes when something does a ten X, it means there is something to it, not that it's a bubble. Like most people, I think, tend to think if something's gone up a lot, it's a bubble. But actually, in the equity world, a lot of times it's actually telling you something's real.
Particularly when it's a network. That's the big difference.
Yes.
Networks tend to do this much more consistently.
Correct. So with me, with our not great understanding, we did spend about four months doing a research white paper on Bitcoin. It's exactly what you said. First, we found that if you just did a very simple two factor model, which is the number of wallets and then activity per wallet, it explained over ninety percent of the rise of Bitcoin since
Yeah. And it also is a good approximation for Metcalfe's law. It's the best best way I got of fitting Metcalfe's law to the network value.
That's right. And then, you know, we realized that's exactly why social media networks created value. Because I mean, those, the idea of like eyeballs and the someone being the customer and then because it's free and you sell them like that was a very new concept. So to me, I had already believed in this idea that you could create businesses digitally that didn't start with a factory. And so we published our first report on Bitcoin. It was around a thousand dollars though. And but we said that by using
I need a time machine. He said, he said, the first, the first publication they made for Bitcoin was when it was at a thousand bucks.
The same two factor model by two thousand twenty two, it could be twenty five thousand dollars. And that was either saying it was going to be worth ten percent of gold or the number of wallets were going to increase. I don't remember the whatever assumptions we used. And then at when we published at the time, I did it more as like a thought piece. And of course, I was advocating for Bitcoin. We recommended two percent. But it wasn't something that we thought we would hang our reputation on. But it created immediate backlash for us with our institutional client who became very angry that we were trying to pitch something that had no tangible value and was clearly just used for for buying drugs. So we actually
Boy, were they wrong.
Got famously fired by several well-known hedge funds.
Wow.
But then I assumed we were probably on to something because I figured if some
Yeah, that's right. When you see that reaction, probably right.
Yeah, because if someone hates it, they haven't done the work. And so so now it's
That's a great, that's a great point. Like dude, I just, I just did a bunch of research on this and I have no bias. Just did a whole bunch of research and you hate it this much. I don't think there's any way you've actually done the the same research that I've done. I don't think you've actually done research. I just think you have your biases and you don't want to see it successful. Maybe I'm on to something here. Now, you got to be careful with that logic because sentiment also matters. There's plenty of great companies in the stock market right now that are great companies and their stock prices are super low and they're going to be super low for years. And the reason why is because people don't know about them. So people, if the sentiment or if people don't know about it, or the sentiment is they don't understand it, um, people aren't going to invest in the company and so supply and demand, people, the price is not going to increase because capital is not going to pour into that into that. That's why CEOs are important. And you got to be careful with that too, because some CEOs could be selling and selling and selling and it's all bullshit, but they have to to keep making the stock price go up. But then there's some CEOs that are actually valid. So you got to have a CEO that's willing to to have interviews and go on podcasts and go on the news and and talk about their product. But you got to have a balanced CEO, right? Because if that person needs to sell the product, you know, the some some famous CEOs you might like, um, that you guys might know of is Palantir CEO. Some say he exaggerates, some say he's he's a little bit on the 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 salesy side and people don't really trust him. But if you do your due diligence, you know, the product, you know what they're doing, you listen to the they like, you can listen to the quarterly calls where he's talking to shareholders who are the owners and telling people about how the company's doing, what the vision is, they have to. All of the reports that they're that they're sharing have to be filed and they're regulated and they're checked on. And sometimes they're checked on by third party accounting firms and all that. That's important as well because we know large scale fraud has happened, right? But chances are, if you know your shit, you can see, you can see it. And so, you know, all of this, all of this stuff matters, but you can't see it unless you understand the the fundamentals, right? So.
Almost nine years later, eight, eight years later, you know, and and Bitcoin's obviously done really well. It's actually had cycles and it, you know, I mean, you've been involved for a long time too. I remember you told me you got involved like in two thousand fourteen.
Twenty thirteen, yeah.
Yeah.
I wrote the first ever macro strategy piece on Bitcoin in two thousand thirteen.
Wow. You know, whatever that was, the report John Norman saw.
What did he say?
And
Might have been, might have been.
What did he say?
Whatever that was the
Piece on Bitcoin, twenty thirteen, yeah.
Yeah.
I wrote the first ever macro strategy piece on Bitcoin in two thousand thirteen.
Wow. You know, whatever that
In two thousand thirteen, I was working at the Faye Shop in Lando Lakes. I didn't own a barber shop. It was my, it was my first year barbering. That's when I first learned about Bitcoin. No, not two thousand thirteen. That was two thousand twelve in twenty. No, that was, yeah, two thousand twelve is when I first learned about Bitcoin. It was like, I was working, I wasn't, I didn't even have headlines yet.
Was the report John Norman saw in that, right?
Might have been, might have been. All the hedge funds, everybody passed it around because it became this thing of like, oh shit. So I onboarded everybody from Dan Tapiero to Mark Yuskow to, I mean, you name it, all the macro All the macro people was all because of me, John Burbank, I mean, you name it.
I might say that that might have been your report because I don't know why John Norman would have brought up Bitcoin, unless it was spinning around his desk, you know?
Maybe, maybe it was. So I know we've got a hard stop coming up. So I just want to cover where we are today. So what's your framework for understanding the year ahead, next year? Just kind of, just give me your data dump of, you know, what are you looking at? What's interesting for you? How the macro plays out or the markets play?
I mean, I think the story arcs are pretty bullish right now. I mean, from the shorter lens, this incoming administration, I think, is doing things that look very disruptive at the moment, but I think structurally are really positive because it's, it's a path for US deficit to normalize. And I think indeed, I think animal spirits are coming back, even though things like these consumer confidence reports don't show it. And we know that there are, there is tangible drivers of productivity, including AI in front of us, that justify, you know, investors allocating capital. And of course, there's still plenty of disruption head, including crypto. And you know, I think Bitcoin is still our favorite idea for this year. So we think it'll be the best performing asset.
What did he say?
Head, including investors allocating capital. And of course, there's still plenty of disruption head, including crypto. And you know, I think Bitcoin is still our favorite idea for this year. So we think it'll be the best performing asset class, even if it's gold.
I gotta hear that.
Incurring all of this is, is a demographic story. I can send you some charts later, but if we look at the number of people aged 30 to 50 in the US, that's actually been steadily rising since 2018, 20, sorry, since 2009. It actually went positive in 2016. And what I mean by that is the number of people aged 30 to 50 matters in an economy because they're the ones that are driving both credit consumption, but also productivity innovation. Yeah.
And investment. In the end, I think all of macro is just demographics. By the time, if you do enough work, go deep enough down the rabbit hole, the one monster factor of all is basically demographic.
And then there's a contrast because as you know, the rest, rest of the world actually has a depletion of population. And so that's creating the demand for AI workers, which is what the US tech companies are producing. So I think that this does feel like it's going to be a very bullish equity cycle ahead. And that's why we're constructive. And it's been a rough start for this year, but I, I think we're just sort of getting through some of the kinks and burning off some of the recent bullishness.
Yeah, I understand, you know, that we get the over optimism, optimism about Trump. Then we get the correction until we get the actual news story. How are you thinking through? I mean, you and I obviously thinking through the AI in the same way. We're about to produce infinite workers. AI and robots is infinite human intelligence and infinite humans. Right? I mean, this completely breaks the economic model. We have no understanding what this is going to do. But let's assume we'll get there whenever that happens. You're starting to even hear Satya Nadella start thinking, and this might be, I want to go back to the psychology of 2000 that many of these people worry about is they're worrying about, have we overbuilt? Or are we overbuilding data? Are we overbuilding chips? Are we overbuilding? I'm not sure that we're not still underbuilding, but we might be scarred. And I want, and I haven't decided, but where do you, where do you think we lie on this? Is this an overbuild and everyone's going to write off a whole bunch of capital? Or is this still too early to say?
People who are going to call the top in dataset and demand have never really experienced industrial cycles, right? Because the cycles actually are going to extend until return on invested capital is well past negative. And I would be very surprised if we're already reaching that saturation now because we know that any model today would be, would have improved capabilities if you improved computing power or power or capacity. So we aren't even experiencing the negative side of that utility yet. So I, I think that it actually would still argue that you need to be investing more capital. And I know, you know, like when you look at percentage of GDP, I mean, look at what happened with China when direct private investment, you know, it got to 40% of GDP. And that was lasted years before you had overcapacity in China. So I don't know how we're even at saturation today in AI. But that's just in broad strokes. But so I agree with you. I think there's still a big runway ahead.
Yeah. You hear what he's saying? He doesn't know how there's even still saturation in AI. Like, it's not even close. We're just getting started and it's, it's hard to fathom because so much capital is being poured into this. But there's a reason why we're printing money. And there's a reason why the government's passing all these policies because they're trying to lay the foundation for this huge run. And it's going to happen, I think. I think we're going to see new, a new, a new reality, right? And it's already become that. When you look at the price of things, when you look at how just everything has shifted, things have changed so much in society. There's a new normal coming even beyond that. We're just getting started. The foundation has been laid for this new normal. And the moment interest rate starts to drop, debt gets even cheaper, more money is going to pour into, into the, into this industry. It's, it's, I don't know, man, I don't, unemployment's not high. Inflation has, has dropped. Trust, yeah, I get it. Cost of living's gone up, but yeah, man. It's, it's interesting times. So anyways, there's another, there's a, there's a third part that I'm going to put on in just a second. I just wanted to do this real quick. No, that's not what I wanted. What in the hell? Give me a second. I'm setting something up real quick, guys. Best risk classification. Oh yeah, there it is. Just kind of sharing what I'm working on while we're watching this. Figure that might be a cool addition to what we're already doing. All right, so that was the second part.
Tom Lee, Fundstrat.
Let's look at the third part here. For the videos and there it is.
I haven't, I saw somebody make a comment about this and I thought it was interesting.
Sounds like he's going to start talking about the companies he likes.
Good one to talk to you about is we're now starting to see the mag seven actually doing capital investment, right? Which they've never done. They just bought their own shares back. Is that a negative or positive in their performance?
I just told you guys about this, right? These companies aren't just getting rich. They're taking the money that they got, that they're making, and they're putting it back into the industry. They're buying back shares. They're buying shares of other companies. They're buying private equity. They're, they're pouring their capital back into the industry to fund all this growth because they don't see any slowing down.
Economic performance is probably good because capital investment was something we'd been missing for two decades. But no share buybacks or less share buybacks? Or does it still generate even more free cash flow that they end up just doing both?
Yeah. Well, I think it's highlighting two trends. You know, one is they didn't do a capex, but they did R and D, which until recently was a P and L expense, not a capitalized expense. And, and so they're supplanting those dollars for capital dollars that become balance sheet assets. In a world of labor shortage, that means you have less OpEx because that's wages, but you'll have more balance sheet intensity because now you have a computer that you're operating. So I think in a world of labor shortage, balance sheet intensity will go up. So it makes sense that these companies are big spenders of CapEx now. And, but that does create another wave of innovation because cooling and power supply and uninterrupted power and all these become strategic advantages, which will create another wave of technology innovation. So I think that there's a lot of opportunity and waves of opportunity being created because of that change that you've just highlighted.
Yeah, I think you're right because it's going to be a game of efficiencies because the, the cost of these models is going down fast and the compute is going down, but therefore they can increase output. So it's just this tremendous race to get more efficient at every single component part of that flywheel from energy to chips to compute.
Yes. And we've seen it in, in the financial industry. You know, the, the financial industry used to trade labor intensives. So had a lot of traders and people. And then they replaced all the traders with computers. But someone naively might have said, well, then financial companies, CapEx will go down because they already have computers trading for them. No, they, CapEx intensity and tech intensity of the banks has actually only gone up since then. So that arms race without even AI is consuming more dollars. And that's of course, I think, going to be the case with, with AI itself.
Putting your stock picking hat on, how do you pick through what is going to win in the next few years? Because yeah, sure, we can, you know, sure, Microsoft will do fine, et cetera, et cetera. But, but how do we make money out of this? And it's not very clear yet with AI.
I want to see if Bitcoin has anything to do with this because he thinks Bitcoin's his favorite play. And I know that there's definitely crypto technologies. I bought a few. Let me look it up. I'll show you guys, tell you guys which ones I, I. And I don't remember why I bought these. I just remember they made sense. I did some research on them. I spent a few hours researching these. And to me, they made a lot of sense as far as the technology of these, of these cryptocurrencies. I think it was Hedera, Stellar. I forget the other ones, but those are in particular are being used by, by AI. So, all right, let me continue.
Side of Nvidia and a few other stocks. How to really make money out of this, out of robotics? A lot of these kind of exponential age technologies, pretty tricky because not much around. It's pretty slim pickings because there's been no IPO market for bloody forever.
I've got two simple analogies to share that I think we should be looking for in AI. So we just published a, a study looking at the wireless fiber boom and when the stocks peaked relative to capital spending. And many people, so let's say it was a 20-year CapEx cycle for fiber and wireless. The stocks relative to the broad market peaked eight years into the cycle. So in other words, like halfway into the cycle, the market will suddenly say enough capital has flowed into the space that they're market performers. However, in that, like now, in retrospect, the 25-year look back, one industry in wireless pulled away from everything, two, actually two did. It was, the first one is the tower industry. It has produced better returns than handset, chips, carriers, spectrum owners, the towers. And it's, as you know, it's a boring business that grows in a unit with demand. The second, of course, was Apple came along, but in 07. So 13 years into the industry and after the industry's stocks all peaked, Apple came in and essentially gobbled up the economics of the ecosystem. So I think that in AI, it'll be, it'll pay to look for the tower equivalent and the Apple that, that Apple, the next iOS that'll come out on top of everything. But I think the second thing that's going to be important is that you, you just described it. AI is infinite workers with PhD qualifications.
Today?
Today.
Don't forget, in two years' time.
Yeah, it'll be super intelligent, right?
Super intelligence. We'd, something we'd never had before.
Correct. And yet these super intelligent entities have to eat pizza. And what I mean by that is like the best performing stock in the last 25 years is Domino's Pizza because everybody has to eat. So if you could find the pizza of the AI worker, so that's not the infrastructure, it's what you have to feed the worker, that's another moneymaker. And I don't know what that is going to be.
So I've got two thoughts on that. Obviously, one is the energy flywheel, right? If you're feeding AI, it's going to be prob.
So the miners, the energy, we, we talked about this earlier. So what are those companies? Whether the energy companies that are going to feed this? What is the, the, who's going to be mining the silicone to feed this? Is there some other technology that, that we're not, that we're not really seeing that's developing? Let's, let's continue to hear what, this is what the pizza is. The shovel is ASML, is Nvidia. The, the, the end use is the Apple, I think, is going to be the ChatGPTs, the Claude, the Anthropics, right? The, even Apple, Apple's going to be it, right? They got to figure out Siri, but they're going to be an X and, and XAI.
Probably something to do with the energy mix and how that's delivered and what. And I don't know, again, because the energy grid is going to get reconstructed and changed anyway. The other one that I've come up with is we are so digital now. We're going to become more digital. We don't, our roles in whatever a workforce is or the economy is going to change. But tomorrow will be more digital than today. That is a fact and that is not going to stop for the rest of our lifetimes. So it's going to cause an equal and opposite reaction. Somewhere within this, tangible experiences become premium experiences. And, you know, if you look at the rise of LVMH, there's something in that story which is equivalent to your pizza, but the luxury pizza. Somewhere within this is going to be an equal and opposite story that's going to be immensely valuable to us as humans.
The thing that is the, the most non-fungible, you know?
That's right. That's exactly right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point because you're right. We're, we're going to be polluting and corroding so many human experiences, especially like with android robots and fake friendships and, you know, things that get.
Hold on, man. Tom is in his bag.
Really android robots and polluting and corroding so many human experiences, especially like with android robots and fake friendships and, you know.
Hold, hold on to the real ones, y'all. Hold on to the real ones. Listen to that again.
That's a good point because you're right. We're, we're going to be polluting and corroding so many human experiences, especially like with android robots and fake friendships and, you know, things that get really polluted.
Well, I mean, look, Tom, we do this now. We're so used to doing this on Zoom. Go back 10 years, you and I would have had to have met at an event or whatever.
Yeah.
And those experiences.
Bro, I was just talking about this. I was just talking about how, you know, 20 years ago, we'd have to be in the same room with these guys to get this type of information, to hear this conversation.
Matter because they actually form true relationships and stuff and you don't do it this way otherwise.
Yeah. In fact, I don't know if you know this, there's a really, someone did an experiment.
So, so real quick, non-fungible, because I don't, I don't, I didn't understand what he was saying. For those of you guys that are smarter, my bad. Non-fungible means not interchangeable on a one-on-one basis because each item has unique characteristics or value that can't be exactly replicated or replaced. Here's a simple breakdown. So in general terms, something non-fungible is distinct and it replaceable.